Okay. Good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, January 30th, 2018. This is the Westwood Board of Selectmen. We will begin as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Grant permission to Westwood Media Center to audiotape and videotape tonight's proceeding. Is there anybody else who wishes to record tonight's proceeding? Bearing none. Okay. So, we're going to start with the announcement of the Roy London Humanitarian Award. Many of us marvel at the kindness of others in our community who unselfishly contribute their time and talents to others, both within and outside of Westwood. Now is the time to recommend people for the eighth annual Roy London Humanitarian Award, those people throughout our community who we believe deserve to be recognized. Roy London was a Westwood resident who did numerous special things to help others, both here in Westwood and outside the community. In 2010, the town of Westwood established this award and raised honor. The award is presented annually to a resident or organization in Westwood who by their actions embody the spirit of Roy London. All nominations should be submitted to Christine McCarthy in the Selectmen's Office at Town Hall. The deadline for submission is March 2nd, 2018, and more information is available on the town's website.
Can I just add something?
Sure.
In terms of the Roy London Award, we do give to multiple residents or organizations each year, and generally it's three or four, and we reach out to many corners of the community to provide recommendations, and as always, we ask that people submit, because sometimes the people are well below the radar, and we don't know who they are, but we really think that giving them an opportunity to be recognized through an award like this is really quite meaningful. And that night itself turns out to be a really fabulous evening when we do finally make the awards.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, we're joined this evening by Carol Lewis, the Chair of our school committee, and Emily Parks, our school superintendent. Carol and Emily are going to update us on the Massachusetts School Building Authority process.
Yeah, John. There's a second one on the bottom.
Oh, I'll go back to it.
Great. Thanks so much for having us here tonight.
Thanks for being here.
We appreciate this opportunity. Yeah, so we just wanted to update you on where we are with our MSBA process. So, as you know, we are very excited that we have been invited by the Massachusetts School Building Authority into their eligibility phase based on our statement of interest that we submitted last spring for the Hanlon Elementary School. And we're very excited to have this opportunity to collaborate with this state agency that provides partial reimbursement to local communities for school building projects, for renovations, repairs, or new construction. So, as you know, we, in the statement of interest process, are only allowed to submit for one building at a time. That's the MSBA parameter. We actually are really thinking about three of our elementary buildings right now. We thought that in this statement of interest process, the Hanlon School probably provided the best opportunity to get invited into the process, so we chose that. But we have been clear with the MSBA throughout this process that we're interested in talking with them about how to address our building needs more broadly than Hanlon. So, having been invited into the eligibility phase, we will now have an opportunity to broaden that conversation with them. Basically, the eligibility phase is a period of up to nine months, where the MSBA is really an opportunity for them to determine if a community is ready to manage and to fund a building project. And as you might imagine, even to get invited in, they vetted us quite thoroughly on that question, and a team came out from MSBA to visit with us back in, what was that, in October, I think?
Right.
And I know Mr. Hickey was there that day, and Mr. Gillette, and Cam Dukeman was there, which was fantastic, because they were very much interested in seeing if there is that kind of collaboration between the school department and the town. So, I think we made a good impression on that day. So, during this eligibility phase, there are several deliverables that we're expected to produce. One is the completion of what they call their educational profile questionnaire. This is where we really start to get into the nitty-gritty of looking at our needs with them and thinking about potential solutions. We need to form a school building committee, and they have some parameters for that as well. And then sort of the big task is that we would need to secure community authorization and funding to proceed into their next phase, which is called the feasibility study. That's when you really start to talk about all the possible solutions. So, we're a ways away from that point. Our eligibility phase, where you're assigned a nine-month window, and ours begins on June 1st, 2018. We have to complete their tasks by the end of nine months from then, February of 2019, but you are permitted to get ahead of those deadlines. And so, we've been having conversations, as you know, with the budget steering, long-range financial planning, the townwide building committee about what we would need to do this spring at town meeting. And so, we've been discussing about having a warrant article and basically going to the residents and asking for an appropriation to get us through to this next, the next phase. And we are quickly trying to nail down how much that's going to be, but we think we're looking at, in the neighborhood of a million and a half dollars for that. And we've begun our community engagement plan, so I hope that all of you got a letter from us by now.
Great letter, great letter.
Thank you. So, there was a letter from Carol and I, we mailed it to every resident in Westwood, because we want them to know what we're talking about and thinking about, and we're considering that kind of the kickoff of our community engagement, which is going to be the full court press this spring. So, throughout the month of March, we're having a series of community forums to hear from people about what's important to them as we think about the future of our schools. We are hosting some open houses at Hanlon, Deerfield, and Sheehan on March 3rd and 4th, so that people can tour the buildings and get an understanding of, you know, some of the issues that we're dealing with there. And later in the spring, we'll be disseminating a community survey. So, the bottom line here is that we know that this is a process where we're really talking about, you know, a 50-year investment for the community, and we want to make sure we involve everybody in that conversation. So, that's where we stand. And, talk to a lot, Carol. Would you like to add anything?
No, you've said it all. I mean, I think it's an exciting process. It's amazing that we have this opportunity, considering that there were so many towns that weren't considered, which really means that the MSBA has, they recognize that we do have an issue here with our schools, and doing nothing is not an option. So, this will be great for the town, and we're hoping that by the end of this process, or when we make a determination of what we're actually doing here, no one will be able to say, "I didn't know this was going on," or "I had no idea that the schools needed this or that." So, we are encouraging everyone in the town, all residents, to get involved in this process and to speak up. It's a great opportunity for us to, as a community, identify what our priorities are in terms of education, and we want to make sure that everybody keeps an open mind and that we keep in mind that the most important thing is the educational experience that we're going to be able to offer for kids in the future. Anyone who has kids in the schools right now will not be affected directly, but it is our town, and we all have an interest in ensuring that we continue this educational excellence, and that we do it, we address the issues in a financially responsible manner. So, it's a great kickoff with the letter, and we look forward to folks coming in, especially touring the schools. So many people have just been to, say, one elementary school, if any. So, it'll, it should be, I think it'd be a good journey for all of us.
Yeah, thank you both. It really is an exciting time. I think when you look at the five elementary schools, they were post-World War II construction, but beyond that, it was post-World War II philosophy in how we educate. So, I would encourage everybody to go on a tour. Unfortunately, the tour is open to the public, has to be on the weekends, but I think for me, when I toured the Hanlon, to see kids in need of services being taught in the hallways is kind of striking, right? So, I think after World War II, kids didn't get taken out of class for specialized instruction, everybody stayed in the room. So, it's just, it's just really different, so it's a different mindset. I think it is exciting. I think it's a really exciting time, and there's no more important job for all of us than to educate the future. So, whatever we can do to help, please let us know. I do, I am glad you sent the letter to every resident in Westwood. I was really a big proponent of that. I think that what I've learned throughout this process, as we've been talking about this for a number of years, is that the constituency is kind of dynamic, right? So, you have those in the schools, they really have a passion about the issue, but they move on, and suddenly you've got a new group that you have to re-educate. So, kind of getting to everybody early and preventing those coming, from coming later and saying, "I didn't really know about this," is just a huge step forward. The only thing I would encourage you to do is, I don't have the form with me tonight, the school building committee, I believe that there's some require, some of it's proscribed as to who goes on, the Finance Director, I think Mr. Gillette goes on. I do think they look for residents who have specialized backgrounds, like engineering and things like that. I don't think we want to be looking for those people in the summer, so my only suggestion would be that we start that process sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I think that's important, and we will put that on our to-do list for this spring, you're right. Once July hits, we may have.
Half of Westwood's gone, Carol's gone, we're all gone, right? We're down the Cape.
I'm here all the time. I don't go anywhere.
When does that have to be established? Because that has to be a list submitted as part of the next phase.
Yeah, by the end of July.
By the end of July.
So, that's the very beginning of the eligibility phase.
But we anticipate having that well before, so.
No, I'm good.
I was curious, because I looked at the flow chart for all the different phases from beginning to hopefully completion of whatever is put forth. Where does the town's permanent building committee weave into this process?
Actually, on that form, it references.
Yeah, so in that, that school building committee that has to be completed by July 31st, one of the required members is somebody from the permanent building committee, so, you know, from the get-go.
But they, but the permanent building committee actually oversees, for the town, all building projects, so, like they did for the high school. So, it actually becomes, this doesn't replace the role of our permanent building committee, does it?
Yeah, I understand, yeah, now I understand the question.
No.
No, I don't think that it does.
So, that's where I was wondering, where does it come in? Because they kind of gloss over it?
Yeah, you know, it's an excellent question, and I will go back and find that out, at what point in the process they come in. I don't believe that it is during the next phase. I think it's just a member from the permanent building committee.
That I get. No, I'm just, I'm really wondering when their work begins in this, and how does it integrate with the MSBA requirements and everything else? Because this is different. When we did the high school, this program didn't exist, and there wasn't a school building authority, there was a funding entity, but they didn't, the state didn't have anybody involved in the actual day-to-day, go forward and build the building and pay the bills and hold the contractor accountable, and all the other things that go with it. So, it would be good to know, just so they also, the permanent building committee is informed as to where they fit into this process, because it's going to be different for them, it's going to feel quite different for them.
Yeah, that's an excellent question. So, we have a conference call that we're supposed to be having, sort of our initial conference call with our project coordinator, and I will find out those kinds of details, absolutely.
It is an interesting process in that it is so, I mean, relatively rigid that we have to, right?
Right, right.
So, which is good in that you, we have to follow along, sure, and we, you know, won't have any gaps or any issues that way, as long as we follow the protocol, right, or the guidelines.
Yeah, I agree with you. You know, I was reading the CMR that applies to this, and it's almost as if they keep learning from experience, you know, and so they really have tried to just button it down. This is who will be on it, this is what you have to do. I mean, it's actually, I think, healthy.
Right. I do too, and we really have to be committed, because, as a town, everybody has to be in, because at any point, right, that's why this, I think they have such a regimented process. If you're not going to follow the process, there are plenty of other towns behind us that could stand to use the money, so.
And what I've, you know, tried to remind anybody, you know, I think there's always this apprehension of change, because there will be some change, right? Regardless of anything, there will be some change, even if it's a building, right? That'll be a new building. But at the end of this process is a really good thing.
Yeah.
We've all got to keep.
It's like having a baby, right? At the end, it could be a little bumpy all the way.
Mine is still young, yeah.
You guys, I'm like, talking to a man, are you kidding me?
Easy from the empty nester.
Just for another day. But, you know, it's interesting too, because it's not just, I don't want people to get the impression, yes, this is a building project, but, you know, you'll have folks who'll say, "Well, you know, so, our kids were educated in that building, it was fine," or, "And our buildings aren't in such a state that we have to be worried about their safety." I think we made that point in the letter. But education has changed so much, and it is quite amazing to go into, and we'll take some tours in some other towns, but to see what other towns have done in terms of their school, their buildings are so different, and just the way we teach now is so different. So, it.
No, it's a good thing. This is all good.
It's a good thing, absolutely.
You know, I just, you know, encourage all residents, whether you have kids in school or not, to come out, because this really has to be a community thing, you know, whether you plan to stay or not to stay in the future, it's always important to have some input. So, I think, and we know with the open town meeting, that everyone should get involved as early as they can and get their voices out there, so we can make the right decision for the town. So, just encourage everyone to make some time to get to one of those meetings at least and learn about it, so.
Right, absolutely. Right. It's a legacy that we leave, for all the good that we have gotten from the town, now we give back for the future, right?
I was just going to suggest that if you haven't, maybe you want to reach out to Lena at the Council on Aging to see if they could get a van to transport people who might.
A lot of that, yes. So, we were thinking of it almost like, you know, the kitchen tour kind of model, where we can see if we can have a van, so that we, people could actually go from school to school to school and see, yeah.
We have a lot of school buses that might be able to.
We do, we have some buses.
We do have a number of residents here, though. So, is there any public comments, questions? Done. Okay. Thank you both, we're here, we're committed.
Thanks for having us.
Thanks so much.
Thanks for your support.
So, we can do to help. Next up, we want to acknowledge Mr. Michael Crone. Join us.
Really?
To the hot seat.
Join us. Join us. You don't get away that easy.
No, we'll get one.
You don't get away that easy. So, Michael, we want to really publicly thank you for all of your service, and I just want to touch on some of it, if you don't mind. And even if you do, I'm going to read this. You have served, Michael Crone has served the town of Westwood for more than 30 years, beginning with his service on the Finance and Warrant Commission in 1989. Mike served as Chair in 1994, and then was elected to the Board of Assessors in 1996, and has served on that board for 22 years. God bless you. In that role, he provided tremendous guidance in ensuring the town's values were fair and equitable, and in compliance with the Department of Revenue rules. You have helped fully automate the assessors' office and operations, and provide excellent guidance each year to the Board of Selectmen on setting the commercial and residential tax shift. You've served for 15 years on the Long Range Financial Planning Committee. You're one of the founding members in 2003. You've been a lead contributor on the town's efforts to build financial stability, including efforts on our stabilization fund, addressing the OPEB liability, promoting sustainable budgets, use of the university station tax revenue, and debt limit analysis, all of which contribute to the town's triple-A bond rating. We are the envy of so many municipalities because of the work of folks like you. Your professional insight, your sound judgment, and your cheerful attitude have significantly benefited our town, and we will truly miss all that you have contributed to our town. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we have a gift for you.
Look.
I have to sit in that chair.
I needed a chair.
Oh, where do you want to go?
I have a chair. Okay. Well, that's very thoughtful. Thank you so much. I've been proud, I've been proud to serve this town and to serve with the wonderful people in this town, so this is, the honor was already mine, but this is tremendous. Thank you.
Thanks for all you did.
Oh, sit down, okay.
We're going to push you out there.
Pam?
Get my good side, oh, no, I don't. That's impossible. Mike hasn't changed in 30 years, he hasn't changed at all.
He didn't to me.
I know, I know.
Okay. One, two, three, we got one more. It's up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I will, I will, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say, does anybody have any comments? Go ahead.
Mike, before you go, I just want to say something. When we, I attended the last Long Range Financial Planning Meeting, which was your last meeting on that great board, and one thing I said, and I want to say here, what you did so many times was get us to think outside the box of whatever discussion we were on, and really explore how to do things well for the town as we planned long-term. And I tell you, you provided so much insight and so much, like a good rudder to the ship, and really helped us do our work extremely well, and the town is so much the better off for the work that you've done, and we're really going to miss you.
Thank you very much. I'll miss all of you, I really will, I really will. Our heart will always be in Westwood. We spent 34 years here. We raised our family here. We're denamites for a little while, melicites for a little while, but my heart will always be in Westwood.
Good.
Thank you.
Don't be a stranger.
Thank you.
Carry this out with me.
You have it, Phil. Good luck, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
That's nice.
Yeah, just said melicites.
All right. So, now with the official departure, PM, you want to join us?
Maureen, members of the assessors.
Maureen, it's her, Maureen Blight-Duck. Are you Chair now, Maureen, is Mark?
No, I would.
We don't know who the Chair was. Yeah, you just took it.
You're still Chair.
Mark's the Chair right now, Mark's the Chair right now.
So, with the official resignation tonight of Michael Crone, we are left with a vacancy on the Board of Assessors, and we have some work, some timely work that needs to be completed, so it's important that we fill that role. So, the general laws dictate that we, the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Assessors, and the town administrator, and the public meet in public session and make a plan, and I know we've done some vetting, and so, we have, over the years, done various different types of processes. This is kind of an interesting one, because whomever it is that fills the position tonight has to seek election in April.
Or not, but there's an election.
Or not, or not, but there's an election, so anybody can run at that time. So, I believe, PM, that we have a nomination from the assessors for Mr. Phil Shapiro.
Yes.
And Mr. Shapiro was a two-time member of the Board of Selectmen of Westwood, so he has been elected in the past. He brings a wealth of experience. He was the first employee of the MWRA and served as the Treasurer there for many years. He was on the Finance Commission as well as other town boards, and he is, it says, Phil has already pulled his papers to run for the one-year seat, so he's planning to run in April, as we sit here tonight. So, so that's where we are. We have a.
And he previously served as an assessor.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that. So, I have no problem with that. This is a public forum. If anybody has any thoughts, comments, other nominations, please speak. Otherwise, I am, do you want to add anything?
You know, I'd be happy to add, you know, it's interesting, I volunteered on different boards too, and I came to realize when I went to the assessors how specialized and important it is to really have a knowledge base, and we had Mike for so many years that we could rely on. We have a wonderful staff, they do a great job, but really, it's, we actually have to go to school to be assessors. We actually have to take a class and pass an exam after our election. And so, we do have some important things coming up. This is a reval year, and we've got a lot of stuff still with university out. So, to have Phil come on and be willing to come on with the experience that he has, we just hit the ground running, which is great, because it took me a while to, even though I'd been in town government for a long time, it took me a while to come up to speed. So, I think his coming in at this point would be a really nice addition for us.
Maureen, will he have to take the test again, since he's been off for a while?
We have to check that for him.
I don't know.
Because he is certified. He's hoping that his certification.
He's hoping.
The one thing is that the state has now just recently changed that to an online testing, because you have to go to class for a couple, it used to be quite hard.
I had to go to Sturbridge.
I had to go to Sturbridge. Governor Baker just announced that at the MMA Conference a couple of weeks ago, as something to help municipalities.
Right.
With what proved to be problematic.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we had to go to, what, six sessions?
Wow, that's interesting.
Yeah, so, hopefully he doesn't have to, but I'm sure he'd pass if he took it.
I can take him no better personally. I served with Phil on the FinCon for years, watched him eat his hamburger while I had nothing to eat. And then he served with the assessors, and watched him eat his hamburger while I had nothing to eat. But Phil, Phil was extremely knowledgeable, and I think he wants to hold your, Phil that seat, he runs production and wins all of that.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you. Want to make a motion?
Okay. Do we both make motions? Whatever. I'm happy to move that the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Assessors vote to appoint Phil Shapiro to serve the remaining three months in the current fiscal year of the seat now vacated by Michael Crone, period, to the Board of Assessors.
Right, it's subject to the election in April, but that's.
But no, it's not subject to the election in April.
Right.
He'll serve, and then he'll run.
He'll serve until the election.
And I'm running too, yeah.
So, I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, done. Thank you.
Good, aye, great.
Thanks, Maureen.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Are you taking your chair?
I am.
Do you want the box?
No, no, no.
Is the box in there, or no? No?
It might be tucked in there.
Probably make it harder to get in the car with the box.
The powers, you seem to be carrying everything out lately. So, I apologize, I just have to go back for one minute on the chairman's update. I had missed the John Crone Public Service Award. Each year, the John Crone Public Service Award Committee awards its high honor to an individual who's served the town of Westwood. John Crone, town treasurer for many years, selflessly gave his time and expertise for the betterment of the community, both as an elected official and in numerous volunteer activities. Nomination forms are available on the town's website and at the Selectmen's Office. All nominations should be submitted to Christine McCarthy at Town Hall, and information is available on the town's website. Those nominations close Friday, March 16th, as opposed to the Roy London, which close on March 2nd. Thank you. Okay. PM, the financial update.
Yes, so we're just, you know, moving along in the budget process. We've been doing pieces over the last several meetings, and we just have a couple more for you tonight.
Good news on local aid.
So, the governor did release his budget, and so, on the state aid, small increases, but at least increases. So, we really have two categories in local aid, unrestricted municipal aid, which is kind of the old lottery category. The proposal is for $754,000, which is an increase of 3.5 percent, or a $25,000 increase for Westwood. So, the governor did statewide, he's doing an increase in municipal aid, whatever the state revenue increases, and that's the 3.5 percent, and he's done that the last several years. So, $25,000 increase there. Chapter 70, our proposal is for 5.1 million, his proposal, that's a $60,000 or 1.1 percent increase over the previous year. So, you know, not really significant money, but it increased, and you can see by the bar graph, it's just been kind of very steady over the last couple of years, no large increases, but also no reductions.
No decreases, yeah.
So we've built these numbers now into our updated budget. And then just to look at the capital budget, and we talked about this overall at your last meetings, we're continuing with the higher levels of capital that the selectmen have committed to over the last couple of budget years, up at about 1.7 million, showing the green, more than double where we were a couple of years ago. We want to continue to really make improvements in our capital. So your preliminary plan had outlined that we would do about $860,000 for school and municipal capital for our base capital articles, as well as try to have one other additional capital article, as again you've done the last couple of years, to kind of get, try to get at some other projects that need to be done above and beyond the base. So then tonight, looking at what those items would be, so first, the school capital, $867,000. The school superintendent has presented these items, and they're very much in line with what they've done the last couple of years.
So PM, do you have any idea what the details on the technology?
Well, they have an overall technology plan, and they just kind of keep biting off and rotating each year on what they need. This is where they do kind of their annual Chromebook purchase-
Right, okay.
...and everything else that they need. But they do have an overall, school-wide technology plan.
And this is, what was, what was, I'm sorry, what was last year's capital expense with them?
The same.
Same? Okay.
Yep. So they go in, and this looks, you know, very standard year-to-year, what they're doing here. The sewer capital funded out of the sewer user fees and sewer enterprise funding, these are the items proposed by the Sewer Commission. Again, this is pretty standard. They just keep trying to make sure that they're in, updating the system each year, not to let it fall behind. So that means inspecting and repairing pipes on a continual basis.
So when we look at stormwater compliance, Mike, is the $50,000, is that, we bring in, we bring in an outside entity? What is that?
I would imagine that that's what it is, an engineer to help.
Yeah, and that's the plan that Todd's been working on, and we've been doing about 50 a year, and he's been able to keep us up to date with the federal requirements on what we need to do. So he did a significant amount of work a couple of years ago, and now it's just a standard update every year. And then this is the municipal list. This is a longer list, but still in that similar total. This is very standard. DPW equipment, fire equipment, police, IT technology for kind of department, townwide operations, some smaller technology for the library, and then some facilities, maintenance, and energy efficiency throughout the various municipal buildings. So this, again, very standard list, year-to-year. We've really been trying to be on a regular replacement schedule for DPW, police, and fire equipment, so that it all stays in good, safe shape. And we're at a pretty good point with that. So with this funding, we would do these items. This is what the items at the bottom here, now that we would have to hold on for this year and do next year. So, you know, we're not at the point yet where we're able to fund everything that very first year that it comes up for replacement, but we would get to these items the next year. So that list you see on the bottom. And there's one large item, is the fire squad. But we did just do two major pieces of new fire equipment.
Oftentimes, we do leases and we pay for something like that over time. Is there thinking behind what to do when we get to this new squad too?
With the new one next year? We can lease that. We can also, we're allowed to borrow for those. So if we're doing a borrowing for other items, such as the school, we could approve that within the borrowing. It's almost cheaper for us at this point to borrow it.
And Mike, I thought with the replacement of the East Street Bridge, we were going to be able to have less customization of our trucks.
We will.
So that'll be a cost savings as well. So that'll be, that'll be good. We'll get more for our dollar with that.
Yes. And then just this next item is looking at some items that could be in that additional capital article. So the one where we're trying each year to do things kind of above and beyond that base, and, and more, not so much the typical, just our equipment and replacement. So the items we have on here are some, some money to do a reconfiguration in Town Hall. Now, the selectmen have moved your meeting space over to here. This would allow us to move a department, the Assessor Department, from the basement at Town Hall, to move them within Town Hall and then create the meeting room in the basement there. It's been something we've been trying to address for a while with that department. The space they're in right now is really not sufficient.
The middle, the middle school elevator came in more than we had hoped, right? I thought we were at 140.
It was always about the 175, I think.
Was it?
Yeah.
Okay.
But they, that's something they need.
Maybe I was hoping I heard 140.
Yep. The travel signal improvements is for the High Street project, $100,000 to do our piece of this. And then the state has authorized the town for a grant-
Oh, good.
...to do some work with that. But often with a grant, we need to do some upfront design. The pool HVAC dehumidification system, $125,000. That's been on our five-year capital plan. It's time to do that project. I do just want to stress that the Rec Department, out of user fees, does annual maintenance to the pool, all kinds of different projects. This is a much larger project that really is beyond that capability.
It needs it.
And they had, have been talking with Long Range, they were into the Long Range Committee last year on this. So it is the time now to do this. That's a, you know, excellent facility used by all ages in the town. It'll be great to get that project done. And then the final two are other items that have been talked about and in the Long Range process. $100,000 for building maintenance improvement to some of the town's affordable housing units in town, to make some necessary repairs to those, to that housing stock. And then $307,000 for the high school tennis courts.
And Mike, are we gonna put the infrastructure so that they can all be lit? The high school tennis courts?
The $307,000 is so that they can all be lit, but they'll be phasing.
Yeah, okay. Perfect. Great. Thank you.
So this is a terrific list that we're able to do some additional capital. I think this is the third or fourth year that the selectmen have been able to kind of get at projects like this. One that we did last year was the COA building, which now looks terrific.
PM, I'm sorry, I'm not, you have the designation, this article, to be funded with free cash, meals, tax revenue. What does that apply to?
This, this listing here of the 857.
Oh, that whole list? Oh, okay.
When I go in and do the actual funding for town meeting, it'll be free cash. I thought perhaps, like, the pool as a, as a townwide facility would be a good use for the meals tax revenue.
I agree.
We might have to save some free cash this year to deal with snow and ice.
But the pool and tennis courts, I mean, that would be great.
And the tennis courts.
To tie that money.
Those are really townwide, used by all ages in the community. They might make good sense for that, for that.
And the Waha funds for the affordable housing, is that likely to become an annual appropriation to, because I remember some of the houses are in need of some renovations, some kitchen renovations or bathroom renovations. So is there, is there a schedule?
They do come in. Yes, they do have a schedule. And we would be looking at probably in this range for the next several years. Much like I just mentioned with the Rec, they do a lot of repair and maintenance currently out of the rental income, but there is some need beyond that capability to do that. And it would be this investment.
Can we just get a copy of what that schedule is in our, I mean, not for meeting purposes, but just to back up this?
I can get it distributed, yeah. They handed it out about six months ago, so.
Yeah.
Yes, and we did have them come into Long Range and kind of go through that process and prepare some information. And then we always have some items on the bottom there that are funded directly with ambulance funds, and so we're noting those. Obviously, the largest is the ambulance is scheduled to be replaced, and if the chief feels that needs to go forward this town meeting, we'll do that and we'll utilize ambulance funds. And then we're just showing you what we'd be holding for the future. The items at the top are kind of items that we've been talking about in terms of that extra article.
What is the retaining wall at Carberry Street?
One of the walls that along the side of the building needs to be shored up.
And they indicated that can wait. The sidewalk improvement, road and sidewalk is 250, is, we would like to kind of supplement the annual Chapter 90 from the state. And so we're working towards trying to build that into the budget process. The Morrison basketball and tennis courts are, we'll wait until the East Street Bridge work is kind of done then, and then come in and be able to do those.
We can't squeeze the Sheen in this year?
Excuse, sorry.
The Sheen?
And the Sheen will wait until next year. We'll do the high school courts first, and then come back the following year and do the Sheen project. And then the items at the bottom are kind of buildings that are, you know, in flux and we're looking at in other ways. So that list, we'll wait till, till we have some, you know, additional timing on when things are gonna be done.
I do, I, I guess I don't remember. In the basement of Town Hall, is there a bathroom?
No.
No.
It's just if you were spending money to rehab the space, it just would have made sense to do it all at once. But there's not one down there, there's not one down there?
Yep.
Plus, we're not doing much, and maybe we're gonna clear a space and make it nice and functional as a meeting space, but nothing elaborate until the renovations get done.
We're talking in terms of, you know, additional work needing to be done to Town Hall at some point. But we do want to wait and see how that incorporates with other municipal buildings-
Right, right.
...and the school building plan. So now that they're underway with that, that'll be able to give us some good clarity over the next year or so. And so at a certain point, we'll certainly be back with additional needs for Town Hall.
And I know we do have to, we have to get beyond the school project, but we really, at some point, need to focus on the DPW sewer operations facility. I mean, it's just, it's very old. It's, we, we don't have a great, it would be nice if we could keep up the recycling program year-round that we do for one week, right, between Christmas and New Year. So, once we get beyond the school piece, I'd like to really focus on that at some point.
And PM, can you explain for the Station 1 renovation, the $1 million allocation, what is that intended for that we're holding off on? Do you know offhand the $1 million? Because I know the building itself needs much more.
Right. At one point, that was the allocation for the floor.
Yeah.
Sorry?
Still is. The repairs that were done were temp, very temporary. They're gonna need, we're gonna need to address that floor at some point in the near future.
Well, I guess that's the question. I mean, can we wait another year? Or no?
Yeah, we can.
Oh, we can? Okay.
Yeah. There were some repairs made a couple of years ago that shored it up, but, you know, what we would, what we did was repaired a deteriorated-
Right.
...flooring that has rusted, rebar-
Yeah, no, no, I saw the pictures.
...floor, so it's, it's-
So that'll be a priority next year? Okay.
PM, is there, what is the difference between the first one and the last one? So I look at it, and it says ICC improvements, 1.3, and then renovation, 1.1. Aren't they the same?
The two on the bottom, I, I believe you're correct.
No, I, I thought one was, once we started doing the structural improvements, you can't then make it compliant in, in pieces. You have to make it compliant whole cloth. And that was one of the costs. And then the other cost was, if we were to go inside. So one is external, one is internal.
No, I think the survey said it was 1.3 to do all the work, to bring it up to code.
We're gonna have to clarify that.
I think, I think it's, I know that I put it on my list, and Todd's probably putting it on his list.
And so it appears twice.
And they're, and they're appearing twice, yeah.
That's what I thought, too.
That's just for base.
That's just to make it compliant. Right.
Yeah. I just wanted to know if there was a difference, because I don't think there is. I haven't seen anything.
Yeah, I think that's right.
So then just to summarize where we are with all of the financial budget articles at this point. So the, the overall budget provides for the operating budget increase as shown here. Our operating budget for FY '19 would be just over $91 million, about a 3.8% increase over the current year. And we're showing by category how is that spending allocated. So the school budget, $44.9 million, 3.4% increase. Municipal operating, $20.6 million, 3.1% increase. Then the other items listed. I will point out where I have the arrow, the fixed cost budget, $14.7 million, a 1.2 million increase or 9%. But that does include, again, the 6% increase for health insurance. We'll be firming that up over the next month, and includes the 15% increase for the pension assessments. I think it's interesting to note that the increase in our fixed cost at 1.2 million is more than twice what was the increase for the municipal operation. It's just, right now, that, that's pressure again on-
It's health insurance.
-health insurance and pension assessment.
PM, to get off track for just a second. Mike, what happened with Blue Hills? Did we, did we ever find out as far as the rest of them? The other towns and assessments?
No, I have to, I have to look into it. I haven't, I haven't heard.
They all approved.
They all approved? Okay.
Yep, that's going forward. Yep, they've submitted to us. They have to do similar bond sale process that we do, so that large document that we do, they've come to get the data, and they're moving forward in that process.
Okay. Just sorry, there to refresh my memory. What happened with that, all the other towns?
I have a GIC question for you, the, the state insurance program. If they had proceeded with dropping Tufts and Harvard Pilgrim, as was a vote that has now been revoked, how would that have potentially, do we have a sense of what that might have done to our budgeting for health insurance costs? Would it have had an impact?
They are trying to make changes to keep the rate increases low. So that was their proposal, to, to keep rates at a minimum increase. So we currently have in about a 6% rate expectation. So they-
They thought they were gonna be saving money by doing that.
By doing that.
Yeah.
Reality is, it's a self-insurance program.
Right.
So if you get a health insurance program that's costing a lot, because the people that are on that particular program tend to be older or use more healthcare than the ones on the less expensive plans, by eliminating those and shifting those same people onto the less expensive plans, it's just a matter of a year or two when it all catches up. And so there, in reality, I don't think there is a real savings here, and I think that that needs to be seriously debated and discussed.
But I think it's not only that. I mean, there's just such resistance to, to true plan design, to really looking at more higher deductible plans. We're still offering this gold standard, these gold standard packages that are just continually increasing in cost.
Become less and less gold standard every year. Because the deductibles keep going up. Yeah. And so that's the true cost savings. That's, that's where they should be focusing their attention. The other thing that came out, and I don't know if that's been clear, but it became clear to me today of reading some material, they would have, the, the two health insurance plans that were being cut are so dependent on GIC membership that they would have actually had almost 10% reductions in their personnel as a result of that, of, of the fact that, so it had some serious impact on those insurance programs.
But at the end of the day, it's not gonna be, they're trying to find cheaper administration of the plans. They're not gonna save money in the long run on administrative costs. It's the services. So, all right.
So with this operating budget, we're, we're really, you know, continuing, again, the selectmen's commitment to stable and sustainable operating budget growth for school and municipal. So for the last couple of years, we've been able to do that, try to stay at that 3% range instead of having, you know, spikes up and then down. And so, we've been able to do that, and we'll be able to again in FY19.
Yeah, I mean, it's a credit to you, Pam. I mean, I think, starting so early in the school year, the, the Budget Steering Committee has been so, so educational for me, but I think we got to the end of the year in a really good place, right? We're going into budget season totally aligned with the schools, and we have a very reasonable
Terrific interaction with the school. They've been attending the long-range financial planning. We've been meeting with Budget Steering. We were into the school committee meeting. They came tonight to your meeting. It's, it's really been terrific.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, a lot of exchange, there's a lot of pieces in the budget, and so we've been, just like here, piece by piece, we talk about something in each Budget Steering, and it's been terrific.
Yeah, it's been a good model. You know, you've taken the lead at long-range financial planning. We appreciate it.
That's great.
So, I'm glad we're going into town meeting season in a calm place.
I think so, and I think they feel good, not only about their operating budget, but about the selectmen's support of their efforts going forward with the school building and all of that, so it's been terrific.
Pam, I just, I did have one, sorry. One of these went down. What drove debt service going down?
So, we just have kind of a natural decline in debt. That's a little bit of a decline, just because we're not adding any new debt in FY19.
Great, thank you.
And some of that is outside of 2.5. The high school drops about $100,000 a year, the debt for the high
The high school drops off in 20
2023.
2023. You count those days, aren't you?
I know.
It's within, it's within sight.
And it's gonna be right when we're ready to
To build an elementary school.
It's gonna be wonderful. It's still the new high school, so. Just your other articles. So, continuing to do excellent work on the capital investment in our standard articles, municipal, school, and sewer, and then that additional capital article with some of those other items. Continuing just the small appropriation of the $100,000 to the stabilization fund to keep that on track with target. So, we just transfer that $100,000 from free cash. So, it lets us stay on track. We have about $3 million in the stabilization account, which is right in line with what we need. That helps us maintain that AAA rating. And then continued on the OPEB liability. So, our appropriation for FY19, 1.4 million, a small increase from the current year, 1.39. Again, that lets us stay right on track with what we need to be doing.
Pam, if the school needs 1.5 for the feasibility study, do we borrow that?
So, we are allowed to borrow that, and that's what we would propose, that as a borrowing article at town meeting. And we would actually just issue short-term debt and then wait and kind of roll that short-term debt, and then if they do get a project approved, we can just roll it into that long-term. Yep, so that'll work out very well. And we already have kind of the language from Bond Council and MSBA that they, the standard language that they use for that. So, those would be all the financial articles. And then, just for our next steps, with the selectmen's approval, we would go forward now with those financial articles. What we do this week is just finish up printing that overall summary budget book. The deadline to get that out is February 1, so it would be on track to kind of meet that with these articles. We do go in next week to the FinCom on February 6, and we present kind of the overall budget, and then Mike will present the municipal budget, and Emily Parks will present the school budgets. So, that's kind of the walkthrough with the FinCom of what's being proposed for this year's town meeting. We'll continue to meet with our Budget Steering and other groups throughout the spring. And then, really, the final piece we bring to the selectmen beyond any updates is we look at those Article 1 and 2, the supplements for FY18. We kind of start to pull that together. So, with your approval, we'll kind of move this all forward.
Do we need a vote, or are you just looking for?
You should have.
Yeah, I, I have a question before we do that, Pam. Another later part of our agenda is a discussion about removing the capital stabilization fund article, funding of it, appropriating money to it. Do we not want to use that for some of the meals tax money to allocate it to that this year? What's the thinking?
To allocate into the stabilization?
Yeah. So, we, we now have that in a, in an account that has to be voted out now with the meals tax revenue.
The meals tax.
But, money is coming in, so how, does it automatically go into that account when we get our quarterly distributions?
So, the vote that town meeting took
Right.
Automatically goes into that account.
Automatically goes in.
And then, you know, I do think, I would recommend that on that additional capital article this year, that, that we utilize the meals tax for the pool project and the tennis court project.
Okay, so that's what you're doing instead of putting it in here.
That would be our first use of the meals tax, yes.
Thank you.
Because we have some specific projects. And then, that would be a discussion going forward if we start to do a transfer from the meals into that capital stabilization. But, I think for the first vote, for people to see exactly something that they are voting for, and a community-wide resource. So, other than that, we had only in the past money voted into the capital stabilization used one-time revenue, like bond premium, and we don't have any of that right now. So, that's why we suggested pulling that, pulling that.
So, I'll make a motion to authorize you to present the municipal budget and related capital or financial articles, related financial articles, to the Finance Commission for their consideration at, for their consideration of this annual town meeting supplemental.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed none. Thank you, Pam.
Great, thank you.
Is that all right?
Yeah, that's great.
That's all you needed?
I just want to highlight one thing that went through and got mentioned. We received notification from Mass DOT this week. They have invited the town, Todd went in and, and made a grant application for the synchronization of the, of the traffic signals along High Street. They have invited us into a process for, to compete for $450,000 for the, for the synchronization network. We have to do the design work. That's the reason for the $100,000 in design money. And then go through the process of getting the funding allocated through the, through the MPO. And so, and it's over a course of two years. We need to do this, and if we satisfy that, there's no guarantee we get the money, but there is an indication that we're highly competitive for the money.
Yeah, and I think, and that's, you know, we're meeting tomorrow, you and I and Todd and Beta, to talk about what we can do in the interim.
Right.
Which I think will be helpful, especially as we go to town meeting, that we're trying to do a lot of different things. I was gonna call you today, because 109 wasn't moving at all.
Yeah. I can tell you there were no roads, right? We should tell you about an hour and a half drive.
I went back, and I worked from home. Were you coming from Walpole? Took an hour and a half?
It's gonna be an hour and a half to get to work this morning.
I pulled out of Oriole, and it wasn't moving. I went back.
Was it all the way to the highway?
It was the snow.
Timing.
It's gridlocked, yeah.
Somewhere, it starts. So, it was everything Like 128, 495, yeah.
Yeah, it was 45 minutes for me from Sharon.
Well, it's a good segue into a short sign of spring. On Saturday, April 28, from 9:00 to 10:30 a.m., Westwood Little League will hold its annual parade. As per past years, the kids will march from the Hamlin School. They will finish at Morrison Field. Format will be very similar. Muriel Marosa, in true fashion, is coordinating this once again this year. She has met with Sergeant Sicard regarding the route, and she has met with the fire chief regarding the fire truck escort, and she is planning to meet with the health director for a food permit. So, this evening, we need to take a vote to approve these, this Little League parade.
Okay. I move we approve the Westwood Little League Parade for Saturday, April 28, 2018, beginning at 9 a.m., contingent upon receipt of final approvals from the public safety departments.
One second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed none. The second piece we have to accept this evening is, as usual, the town and the town's employees have really stepped up in the time of tragedy, and there has been an outpouring of support for Lisa Lennon, whose husband passed away in a, in a house fire earlier this month. And the town employees have started a collection for Lisa, and she is expecting her first child, and she is currently living with her family. There are two social media pages, GoFundMe and YouCaring, that have been set up by Lisa's friends and families. The GoFundMe is, is not a not-for-profit, and it does charge an administrative fee with the donations collected. The town employees felt it would be more impactful to send a check directly to the family, and we've done that in the past. Since the news of the Lennon's families, Lennon family's tragic loss, some members of the community and surrounding communities have reached out to donate directly to Lisa. Many people have brought things to YouHere, Town Hall, to the police stations, and to the fire stations. So, we do need a formal vote from the board to accept donations and then hand them over to the Lennon family.
Okay. I move that the Board of Selectmen accept the monetary donations received from town employees and others in the community and neighboring communities to be given to Lisa Lennon to help defray her costs.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, the next, we're gonna review the annual town meeting warrant articles. The first step we need to do is remove two articles that had previously been placed. One is an article related to cleaning up police station borrowing, and the second one is an appropriation to capital, the capital stabilization account. As the budget continues to be finalized, the town administrator and the finance director are not making a recommendation on appropriation of the capital stabilization fund at this year's annual town meeting, so the board, at its discretion, may remove this article. And the second one, the finance director and the town treasurer, no longer, there's no longer a necessity for the cleaning up of the police station borrowing article.
At this
At this town meeting, anyway.
Okay. I move we remove the two articles previously stated from further consideration for the 2018 annual town meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And so, at this point, we're gonna review the articles. We don't need a vote though, is that correct?
No, you don't need to vote on that.
They don't need to vote. Are we just reviewing?
You just want to discuss them a little bit.
Okay, let's just start the talk. The, Amber, the supplemental appropriations and the unpaid prior year's bills are just kind of standard articles, right? They're cleanup for budgeting purposes, okay? The town operating budget that we voted on tonight will be included as a warrant article. The municipal capital improvements, the school capital improvements, the sewer capital improvements, we just went over tonight. Other capital improvements, an appropriation to the stabilization fund, appropriation to OPEB liability, we reviewed tonight. Is there any thoughts, questions on those?
No.
Okay. Street acceptances, this article is a standard article to present private roads. Do we have any?
No, we don't. And that's probably not gonna
No, I said I don't believe so. No indication of any.
So, we, we don't think that's gonna go forward, but until
Till the, yeah, right.
Hedge row is Huh? Yeah, well, hedge row is one possibility if they can reach an agreement.
Okay. So, maybe hedge row, okay. Road improvement, this is a standard article that authorizes the acceptance of any state funds, included chap, including chapter 90 funds that are allocated for maintenance. That's a standard one as well, right? Okay. New fund for the cable PEG money? Do you want to talk to that a little bit? Does anybody?
No, there are two possibilities of, that the state has provided us. Neither one of us is the process that we use. One is to establish some as an enterprise fund where you'd have to create a budget voted, voted at annual town meeting, so you'd have to estimate it revenues. That, you know, that's not exact science, so it's not the preferred way. The other way is to simply allow the cable companies to directly allocate the funds to Westwood Media Center or whoever we have conducting our PEG access. You will recall that under the old way that we have been doing it, which is to get the money and then allocate it, once we get it, within, I think it's 60 days. The reason why that's a preferred way is if you have an issue, which we have had, you can withhold those monies, which we have, and you can put some pressure to get things to revise. We need to have a conversation with an attorney about whether or not we can negotiate the contract that we have with Westwood Media Center, which would allow us some, some ability to preserve those funds that are assured, should we run into any issue. At the moment, everything is, is running smoothly. In fact, it's never been better
Right.
in absolute terms. But, that's an industry where, you know, it's a couple of individuals, and it can, it can fluctuate. So, you know, the only reason for not take, having that pulled off is we haven't had a conversation with the attorney yet.
Okay.
To make sure we can do it.
So, there's more to come on this.
More to come, yes.
Okay. The school borrowing for funding for MSBA eligibility review was reviewed tonight. We think it's gonna be the vicinity of a million and a half, so before March 6. Is that the next? FinCom is February 6. I'm sorry. We think we'll have that amount. Okay. So, the next one is a placeholder for the authorization for disposition of municipal property, namely the Islington Center redevelopment. The Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board are reviewing plans for the proposed redevelopment of Islington Center in response to a request for proposal issued back in 2016. Petruzziallo Properties was the selected bidder, and the town began discussions regarding the potential redevelopment of town-owned property along Washington Street. So, the board is negotiating, and the town is negotiating with the developer for a land disposition agreement. The developer has submitted an application for an FMUOD special permit, which is currently under review. The initial public hearing was on January 16, and the next hearing session is scheduled for February 13. And so, the expectation is that by the second FinCom meeting, we would have a recommendation, Mike?
Yeah, we'll have to have something by that second public hearing.
Okay. Placeholder authorization of funding for various aspects of the redevelopment of Islington, including the relocation, renovation, and possible expansion of Wentworth Hall. The land disposition agreement for the proposed redevelopment of Islington Center is expected to include funding for the relocation of Wentworth Hall, for the design and construction of new municipal space for community use, and to house the Department of Youth and Family Services. And again, we're still
We're still in discussion.
We still have a couple of steps to get to first, okay. Placeholder authorization for the disposition of municipal property, the Obed Baker House, but we haven't received any, any proposals, right?
No, we haven't. So, we're still in discussions and exploring if there's some alternative approach that we can take. It's not likely we're gonna find something between now and, and town meeting, but we're not, we're not throwing up, throwing it in yet.
Okay. Placehold discontinuance of public use and abandonment of portions of Hedge Row Lane as a public street and authorization of transfer of land within the current right-of-way to owners of abutting property. Do we think this will be ready?
Oh, to have a better sense for any progress.
We've been told that they're trying to negotiate, but they have not been able to get a meeting of the three neighbors. So, we're still working towards it, but nothing yet.
Okay. Lot of placeholders. Mike, the next one, the town bylaw, removal of snow and ice around fire hydrants.
Right.
Are we really sure we're ready this year on that?
Well, the fire chief would like to make a proposal to you, and you can have him come in at your next meeting.
Yeah, he needs to.
He understands some of the issues that were raised. He's not looking for fines. He's not looking for, he's looking to try and establish a, a practice that would help make sure that fire hydrants got done and to have, have folks aware of the fact that they should be doing it in their neighborhood in a gentle way. So, that's his, that's his hope.
I know, but when you tell people they're subject to an ordinance, that doesn't feel gentle.
No, it doesn't.
Except, there's, there's no penalty.
You know, Mike, something I worry about is, there are some places where for people to do this puts them in streets, and that worries me. So, it, this, I think this should be a discussion, but I don't think it should be an article going forward as to how we can find a balance between that need and safety. I mean, it's public safety on always. We talked, FinCom brought up issues of if people are, have disabilities and can't do it, that's one thing, but I know I was out clearing mine, and fortunately, I'm on a street that, that's okay, I can do it, but it made me think about people who might be on busy streets that don't have sidewalks, and asking them to do that might be inappropriate.
But, we should, he should still come in, though. I mean, we should talk about
Well, I think it's a good discussion to have, and I think encouraging people where they can to do it. I remember many years ago, calling the fire department and trying to ask, where was the location of the fire hydrant, because it had been so buried? And they didn't even know where it was. They didn't have clear records. This was quite a while ago.
Yeah.
And I know that's different, and I also know an Eagle Scout program had put markers up on the fire hydrants, and that's great. There's an education involved in getting people to do this, and I think that's a big part of it. So, by having the discussion will help get the word out, but I'm not sure a warrant article ordinance is
But, we can, you know, cover some ideas and
So, I can have him come into your upcoming meeting and
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Just have a presentation discussion with you about it.
Okay.
I think that's really what he was endeavoring to do in the beginning anyways, is to, to see where you sit on this. Yeah.
Okay. The next warrant article, zoning amendments related to Islington Center redevelopment project, including map amendments to alter the boundaries. Oh, I'm sorry, those are the planning board articles. Okay, thank you. So, we
Your meeting, right? So, the planning board's meeting tonight to actually go over those.
On these?
Yep.
Oh, good, okay.
So, we might have
Tonight, we're just discussing
Oh, thank you for that. So there's a lot of placeholders. It could be, the Selectmen's articles could be thin. Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay, moving on. The next piece on our agenda is Islington Center redevelopment suggestions to the Planning Board on proposed development. Do you want, do you want, do you have anything to add to it? Do you want to talk to this?
So you have a letter before you that's proposed to send the Planning Board information on what the Selectmen would like to see in the development. It's really a joint application between Petruzziallo and the Selectmen. So this is just clarifying the points in the initial project that you don't agree with, that you think need to be changed, and the points that you think the Planning Board should concentrate on.
Yeah, I, I had read it, Nora, and I like it. I think, and maybe this is too, too granular, but there had been always a lot of talk about the, how that, the current building is, sits on the corner of East and Washington, and it needs to go back a little bit. So is that something that would come out as the process evolves?
So one of the, the first step is figuring out what needs to be done with that intersection. So the engineers, both the applicants engineer and then the peer review engineers are reviewing whether a left-turn lane is appropriate, whether it would fit there, whether a right-turn lane coming from East Street onto northbound Washington Street makes sense. When they determine what the traffic configuration is, then they'll see what land is left, and then they'll look to that building.
Okay.
So I think it's likely that the building will be stepped back further than it is now, but the sidewalk may not be significantly larger than it is now.
Right.
It'll all depend on what land is left and what makes sense for the program.
Okay. Did you have your hand up?
I did have my hand up, but I, no, I was moving my hand, but I...
Get away.
I really like this, what's included. It's a lot of things that did come up at the meeting, but that we have been talking about for a while. One thing I don't see is discussion about more green space, and I know the planning board's going to be addressing that, but...
Absolutely.
You know, given the task force brought things to us, and we highlighted things that we thought were very important, I don't want that to be lost in our voice to this as well.
That can be added to this letter, but keep in mind that you also have a memorandum of agreement, and that is covered in the memorandum of agreement. I think there were 10 or 12 points, I think, I have it in front of me, and that was one of them, but...
Yeah, I just, I want the planning board and, and everyone to know that our position remains firm on that, because it did seem to be quite lacking.
Certainly is.
Do you know, between the first hearing, or in the second one, are there any modifications or changes being made?
There are, but we haven't seen the plans yet. So the very first change is the street geometry.
Right.
And everything is dependent on those.
And they're doing traffic studies now, too, right?
They're doing traffic studies. So we're waiting to hear from the engineer and have the two engineers determine what makes sense there. Once they have a consensus, then the design engineer sets out the parking, and then what's left for the buildings goes in, and green space is part of that overall engineering.
Right.
Okay.
And then whatever comes out of those revised plans, the Planning Board certainly has the ability to, to further revise those plans. So we're still waiting for that first go-around of revisions.
Maybe the best thing to do, Nora, is just by way of reference in, in the memo that goes from us to them, reaffirm or reference back to the points that we made before, because a lot of thought went into that, a lot of work that the task force did.
But maybe you should, by just putting it in there, it's not gonna hurt yet.
Well, some things have gotten lost, because that was already out there, and then a proposal came forward that...
Right, so the proposal that came forward didn't include the street geometry changes either.
Right.
So there were, there were items that the engineers that were working on developing those plans just didn't incorporate.
And a waiver for the affordable housing units came forward, which...
Right, which we informed...
Totally inappropriate.
The very day we received that, that that was going over.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Um, do we want to...
Can we do a vote?
Do we need to take a vote on that?
No, I think so, we...
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I move that based on the feedback that we've provided for reference to the, what is, what do we want to call that, the...
Isn't this under the development process?
Yeah, but the, no, the, the agreement we had before.
The memorandum of understanding.
The memo, the memorandum of understanding, thank you. That we amend the memo to include reference to that, that we approve, approve the memorandum and authorize that it be sent to the Planning Board to be incorporated into the record of the application to redevelop Islington Center.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have, oh, did we add something?
You missed that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, thank you. We do have a recommendation from the school committee. This was added this afternoon, the appointment of Mr. Charles Donahue to the Open Space and Recreation Planning Committee.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have regular meeting minutes from December 18th, 2017. I had no changes.
Okay, I move approval of the minutes from December 18th, 2017.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public and press, any inquiries, thoughts, comments? No? Okay.
I have a...
Oh, sorry.
...that I need to make. I'm going to be, going to Israel on February 10th through the 18th as part of an international committee that I belong to at the ICMA, and to attend a conference, World Cities Conference, so...
That's great. Do you want to say what the ICMA is?
International City Managers Association.